Two. Hello and good evening. If you signed up for public speaking tonight, please use the right aisle, please, to avoid all the electronics on this side of the room, please. So if you have signed up for public speaking, please use the right aisle, please, and thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the 2025-26 budget. Before we get started, I'd like to go over the ground rules for this meeting. This is a public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget. All public comment should be related to the budget. Any other public comment should be kept until the next regular board meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know you have one minute to wrap up. At the sound of the second bell, your three minutes are up. We have a lot of speakers tonight. Please be respectful of others' time. If you run out of time, you may submit your comments in writing to Ms. Santiago. No boisterous conduct shall be permitted. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language, no signs allowed inside the board meeting room. Speakers may not yield their time to another speaker. The speaker must refrain from naming employees. A person may address the board no more than twice during the single meeting. Before we begin, I want to share that Superintendent Torres Rodriguez is unfortunately unable to join us this evening. She is homesick with the flu and has lost her voice. We wish her a speedy recovery. While it is not required for this hearing, the superintendent has consistently made it a practice to provide a high-level summary of the budget process, the mitigation efforts undertaken, and the remaining deficit, if one remains. That commitment to transparency and accessibility is something we greatly value and will continue to uphold in her absence. Chief Financial Officer Caitlin Richard will provide an update. For some of us on the board, this is our first budget cycle, and we deeply appreciate the many opportunities that we and the community have had to engage in the budget process. The more informed we are, the better we can tell the unique Hartford story and advocate effectively for resources that our students and staff deserve. At last Thursday's meeting, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez spoke about the challenging budget context we are navigating. I want to take a moment to echo her words. She said during that meeting, "I want to acknowledge the very real and difficult impact the budget cuts have had over the years and continue to have on our staff. These cuts are not just numbers on a page. They affect people. They mean increased workloads, reduced resources, and in some cases, the loss of a valued colleague. I know that for many of you, this has created a heavier lift and added stress, both professionally and personally. The strength, resilience, and commitment you continue to show under these conditions do not go unnoticed. It is a very challenging time, and I want you to know that leadership is very aware, as this board is as well, of the weight being carried across the organization. We are actively exploring every option to advocate for more resources, minimize additional strain, and support you however we can in the meantime." End quote. We will continue to advocate on behalf of our students and staff because we are not fully mitigated. Tomorrow, a letter from the superintendent and I will go out to the Hartford Public School community along with advocacy postcards. The superintendent and I will be meeting with the mayor this week and later with Council President Surgeon and OMBG Chair Councilman Hernandez. We have not paused our state-level advocacy either. Our students, our educators, our families, and our community matter, and they deserve equitable access to high-quality education and resources. Thank you for being here tonight and for your continued engagement in this crucial process. We encourage your input, and please be respectful. This will now be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos. Si alguien en la audiencia necesita interpretación al español, por favor levante la mano y el intérprete le ayudará en este momento. Antes de comenzar, queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública de presupuesto recomendado por la superintendente. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben estar relacionados a este presupuesto. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la junta. Cada miembro del público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, el timbre sonará para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto para concluir. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión, significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche. Así que, por favor, seamos respetuosos del tiempo de los demás. Si no les da el tiempo, pueden entregar sus comentarios por escrito. No se permite conducta ruidosa. El tiempo límite será aplicado estrictamente. No se permitirán ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite lenguaje vulgar o soés. No se permiten letreros dentro del salón de la reunión de la junta. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se deben mencionar empleados por nombre. Una persona no puede dirigirse a la junta en más de dos ocasiones durante una misma reunión. Antes de comenzar, quiero informarles que lamentablemente la superintendente Torres Rodriguez no podrá acompañarnos esta noche. Se encuentra en casa con gripe y ha perdido la voz. Le deseamos una pronta recuperación. Aunque no es un requisito para esta audiencia, la superintendente ha hecho de esto una práctica: ofrecer siempre un resumen general del proceso presupuestario, los esfuerzos de mi mitigación, y, si aún queda, del déficit restante. Valoramos mucho ese compromiso con la transparencia y la comunicación accesible, y lo continuaremos honrando en su ausencia. La directora financiera Caitlin Richard proporcionará la actualización. Por algunos de nosotros en la junta, este es nuestro primer proceso presupuestario, y agradecemos profundamente las múltiples oportunidades que hemos tenido junto con la comunidad para participar en este proceso. Cuanta más información tengamos, mejores podremos contar la historia única de Hartford y abogar de manera efectiva por sus recursos que merecen nuestros estudiantes y personal. En la reunión del pasado jueves, la superintendente habló con sobre el difícil contexto presupuestario que enfrentamos. Quiero tomar un momento para repetir sus palabras. Quiero tomar un momento para reconocer el impacto muy difícil y difícil que los recortes presupuestarios han tenido y continúan teniendo sobre nuestro personal. Estos recortes no son solo números en una hoja. Afectan a las personas. Significan una mayor carga de trabajo, menos recursos, y en algunos casos, la pérdida de colegas valiosos. Sé que, para muchos de ustedes, esto ha generado más estrés. Perdón. Sé que, para muchos de ustedes, esto ha generado más entre tanto profesional como personalmente. La fuerza, la resiliencia, y el compromiso que siguen demostrando bajo estas condiciones no pasa desapercibidos. En un momento muy difícil, y quiero que sepan que el liderazgo y también esta junta de educación está plenamente consciente del peso que se está cargando en toda la organización. Estamos explorando activamente todas las opciones posibles para abogar por más recursos, minimizar la carga adicional, y brindarles el mayor apoyo posible en estos momentos. End quote. Continuamos abogando en nombre de nuestros estudiantes y personal porque aún no hemos logrado una mitigación completa. Mañana, la superintendente y yo enviaremos una carta a la comunidad de las escuelas públicas de Hartford, junto con postales de abogacía. Esta semana, la superintendente y yo nos reunimos con el alcalde y más adelante con los presidentes del Consejo Surgeon y el concejal Hernandez. Tampoco hemos detenido nuestra labor de abogacía a nivel estatal. Nuestros estudiantes, nuestros educadores, nuestras familias, y nuestra comunidad importan y merecen un acceso equitativo a una educación de alta calidad y a los recursos necesarios. Gracias nuevamente por estar aquí, por su compromiso. Continúo con este proceso tan importante. Les invitamos a compartir sus comentarios, pero, por favor, sean respetuosos.
Thank you. I believe I will now turn it over to Ms. Caitlin Richard.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the board and members of the community. I want to thank you for being here tonight and for your participation. Is this not on? Oh, right there, okay. Sorry, I'll start over. Good evening, members of the board and members of the community. Want to thank you all for being here tonight and for your participation in this process along the way. I'm just going to give a brief overview of where we're at in the budget process, and then we will be turning it over to public comment. On this slide, you can see our timeline for the budget process. We are nearing the end with our board vote being on the 15th of April. Today is a really important milestone. It's our final public forum, where we're able to get more input from you all on the budget for next year. It's one of multiple touchpoints we've had, so this will be our third public forum. We've also been doing legislative advocacy that board members, district and school staff, community members have been involved in advocating at the state and city level. And we've been working with our school teams as they've gone through their budget process with their school governance councils. The next upcoming touchpoints will be Monday's Board Finance Committee meeting that will include more detail on the budget for next year, and then, as mentioned, the vote on the 15th of April. We've been grounding in the historical nature of the context of the budget deficit that we're facing. So for the past decade or so, Hartford Public Schools has faced flat revenue and rising costs. The biggest areas of those costs are special education, transportation, tuition, and also salaries. We've been approaching this from two different ways. So one has been deficit mitigation. So we have been examining what are the most important resources in our budget that we need to preserve and identifying reductions we can make as far away from that as possible. We also have been engaging in legislative advocacy, so working both at the state and the city level to increase revenue for Hartford Public Schools. This slide shows some of the historical data that gets at that nature of the persistent structural deficit. So this data goes back a decade. And what you can see is over the past decade, so since FY '16, Hartford Public Schools has had to cut $170 million and 530 positions. So this is not a new problem. This has been an ongoing problem. During the years of COVID, there was access to federal ESER relief money that helped kind of curb the cuts that needed to be made at that time. But we are now back in that dynamic. So I think it's really important to emphasize this is not a new problem. We continue to confront similar challenges with flat revenue. As we've engaged in this process, you know, it's been challenging as we face a budget deficit, but we've been grounding in some guiding principles. One of those is alignment to the strategic plan. So the new strategic plan was just passed back in February. So we've been seeing how resources align to that. We've also been looking at what the research says on what best practices are. And of course, we've been thinking about fiscal sustainability and what we can actually afford. In the center of all that, we've kept a focus on equitable access for all students. In terms of how that persistent structural deficit plays out for next year, what you can see here is that we were projecting a $30 million deficit. That's largely because expenses are going up larger than revenue. So we see a small increase in revenue based on state funding, but a much larger increase in expenses that are those same categories that we've been seeing for the past decade. So things like tuition, transportation, special education. We also have our increases in salaries based on our contracts so that we can recruit and retain staff. And so this is what we've been facing. It's the $30 million deficit, and that's the problem we've been trying to solve throughout this process. So far, in terms of deficit mitigation, so the reductions we've been able to make, you can see those on this slide. It's a combination of school site personnel and non-personnel and district office personnel, mostly managerial, and non-personnel. We've also set some targets for reduction specifically related to transportation as that is one of the biggest cost drivers. In total, that adds up to about $13 million worth of reductions. So out of that 30, we have mitigated $13 million so far based on making reductions to our budget. We also got the good news from the city that they will be providing us with an additional $3 million in funding for next year. And so that is going to support us with our deficit mitigation as well. So $13 million in reductions, $3 million additional from the city means we're at about $16 million mitigated out of the 30. We still, these are some of our legislative priorities. We still have not heard from the state on any additional funding for next year. They're currently in their budget process. We've been doing a lot of advocacy work. A lot of you all have been involved in that. And we're going to be launching another campaign related to increasing funding for Hartford Public Schools, specifically for special education, but across the board for all of our students so that we can offer the services we know we need to. So this is an ongoing body of work related to state advocacy that we're continuing to work through as the state works on its budget. So to summarize, to address that $30 million deficit, we've identified reductions to the tune of about $13 million. We got three additional from the city. So that means we've mitigated about $16 million. This leaves us then with about $14 million, so we have 13 to 15 there, that we are going to plan to leave a placeholder for. And so we plan to leave a placeholder for additional state funding because we know we have not heard back from the state, and we know we have not yet mitigated that amount. What it does mean is that if we had to balance the budget today, there are important expenses in our budget that we could not account for. Those are shown on this final slide. These are really difficult to think about and to talk about as they're what we would consider essential services for our students and our staff. But we've done the work of thinking through what would it mean if we didn't get additional state funding? And it would mean not being able to account for things like this. And so that is really what is motivating us to continue the advocacy work and what we need you all to support us in as we continue that campaign. And that concludes the overview of where we're at in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. We appreciate that. I believe we'll now turn it over to Ms. Santiago.
Our first speaker is Kiara Hill.
Hello, my name is Kiara Hill, and I'm the Vice President of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. You might remember me from a couple meetings ago. But I'm here today to talk about a couple of concerns that me and several other students and staff from my school have had. Believe me, I completely understand like just how grave our budget situation is. But based on the recent budget plan that our school has received, they're completely cutting out behavioral texts for us. And I'm not sure if everyone knows, but classical has gotten a very bad rep for student behavior at our school for a long time. And it's a reputation we've been fighting against for years now. And we've finally come to some sort of progress, but that is because of our behavioral texts. And if we want to be able to keep at least one behavioral text, we have two this year. Next year, the plan is to have none whatsoever. If we want to keep at least one, that would mean we would have to cut a teacher position, which would mean cutting back on one of our core classes, which we just can't afford to do because that would either leave students without proper credits, without classes that they want to take, or just without a proper basis for their classes. And it's also just not safe for us to not have behavioral texts in our school. It's really not a job that can be replaced by social workers, counselors, security guards, principals. It's not something that just can be replaced with another job or taken over because everyone is already so busy because we're trying to make progress as a school. And so I'm just asking if you could give it some consideration. My principal, Bethany Sullivan, has already reached out multiple times. You guys have been negotiating, from what I know. And she's getting a little nervous that we're not going to be provided with a behavioral tech next year. And that really concerns me as a student for the safety of myself and staff members. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bella Promenich.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Bella Promenich. Recently, we've heard a lot about the bad things about Hartford Public Schools and why we are falling behind in offering fewer and fewer opportunities to students compared to other Connecticut schools. But today, I want to talk about what makes Hartford Public Schools so great. My name is Bella Promenich, and I'm a senior at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. I've been in Hartford Public Schools since fourth grade, and as I will soon be graduating, I wanted to share some of the things that I loved about attending school in Hartford. Over the course of my time at HMTCA in Montessori Magnet, I've taken dozens of classes that have sparked my interest and inspired me to pursue areas of study that excite me. It was the incredible Hartford teachers who curated engaging lesson plans and worked right beside me that taught me how to love learning. I remember way back in sixth grade when I first took my first middle school math class. I was just a quiet kid hovering in the back of the class, too scared to raise my hand or to answer any questions. I remember my teacher, Ms. Bartonstein, who helped me break out of my shell with fun, mathy games and activities. She helped inspire my love of math, and I continue to use those same skills of confidence and kindness that I learned in her class today as I must speak up for myself and raise my hand in classes like calculus at Trinity College. The teachers at Hartford Schools not only teach us how to excel in core subjects, but they also teach us skills of self-advice and kindness and confidence that will guide us through the rest of our lives. It is because of those amazing teachers at HMTCA and the invaluable lessons that they've taught me that I am excited to be attending Yale University next year, something that I couldn't have accomplished without the incredible support that I've had here. As a kid from a small suburban town, I was nervous to attend a city where some of the classes had more students than my one-room class in elementary school. Hartford Schools are full of diverse students, each with their own unique backgrounds and cultures. As one of the largest districts in Connecticut, it serves thousands of students from all around the world. I've made friends from Haiti, Britain, the Philippines, and more. These are friends I never would have met if I hadn't gone to HMTCA. It is these diverse experiences that allow people to become more open-minded, well-rounded, and accepting of cultures that may be different from their own. Hartford Schools create a supportive environment intended to uplift students, no matter their background, and push them towards success. It is these elements that make Hartford Public Schools so unique and special to me. And I worry that these budget cuts will put what makes Hartford Public Schools so great at jeopardy. So many teachers that have played an influential role in my life have lost their jobs or at risk of losing them because of these cuts. I cannot imagine what my middle school and high school career would have turned out to be if my sixth-grade teacher was too busy handling a class size too large to take the time to connect with me and help me break out of my shell. Additionally, with these cuts, how will our school be able to support so many students and allow for an engaging environment needs to thrive? Without proper investment in our futures, there is little chance that we can reach our full potential. As a senior, it is especially crucial during these times of deciding our next step in life, whether that be college, the workforce, or something different, that we maintain important values of advocacy, self-assurance, and that we gain the skills needed to thrive in this big step of our lives. Without investment and support in our future, I don't see how that will be feasible. If you want to ensure the next generation of students will be successful in their endeavors and that they will thrive in whichever path they choose, they need the same attention, guidance, support, and funding that used to make Hartford Schools so great. And that guided me to be the person I am and gave me the confidence to speak up here today about the school that I love. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Campbell, followed by Oralise Zaman, if you want to make your way forward. But next is Daniel Campbell.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board. My name is Daniel Campbell. I've been a proud school counselor at Sport and Medical Science Academy for the past three years plus. In the spirit of NASA's SpaceX Crew 9 safe return to Earth on March 18th, I would like to look back to 1957 when Russia launched the satellite Sputnik into space. This paved the way for President Eisenhower to secure funding for the expansion and proliferation of the school counseling profession to find our young aspiring astronauts who would help the US win the race to space. This information is from an article entitled "Outnumber" by Julia Hanna with Harvard Graduate Magazine. It's a good read, and I would like to echo how nowadays this vital position is overlooked, underappreciated, and is often one of the first positions to the chopping block for budget cuts. As our budget is still not approved, I will share that any budget cuts to school counselors will be an absolute disservice to our students and families. On March 27th, the district held an open house for hiring support services. These support service vacancies included special education teachers, social workers, speech and language pathologists, psychologists, behavior analysts, and paraprofessionals. School counselors were not included in the list of support services. This is of utmost concern because school counselors work with all these other professionals at multiple capacities. In my current role as high school counselor, a counselor is required at every PPT, which entails being on teams with every other professional that was invited to this open house. School counselors are also 504 coordinators, which is a state-regulated protection and federally recognized. This also requires the school counselor to lead teams with these other vacant positions. High school counselors are experts in post-secondary planning, which is an essential component to the future career trajectories of all of our students as well as a paramount aspect of the PPT process for all our special ed students. School counselors are also adept problem solvers with expertise in master in student scheduling and standardized testing. Essentially, school counselors are necessary for school operations and functionality. School counselors alongside social workers are the only professionals in our building certified to make risk assessments on students who may be in danger or posing danger to others. This poses safety and security implications if school counselor cuts are made. School counselors are the trusted adults of many students and the contact person for families with concerns. They are highly-trained mental health professionals who are experts in graduation requirements and meeting the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. They hold a heavy weight in the college admission process, as many colleges require school counselor recommendations, and they hold valuable insight into career paths and sources of scholarship networks and opportunities to help plan for the increasing need for post-secondary training. We are not just educating our students to get them through high school graduation. School counselors who are not working at comprehensive high schools such as myself are not accompanied by a team of college and career specialists. Thus, these school counselors are manning post-secondary readiness for future graduates on their own. This includes creating Common App accounts, assistance with the fast-food process, and setting up college visits and tours with local colleges and universities. Reductions for school counselors at Magnet Schools should not happen if they are performing these duties without the support of college and career specialists. My recommendation is that reductions in school counselors should not happen at all for these reasons I have previously mentioned, among many, many more that I cannot fit into three minutes. Thank you.
Oraliz Guzman, followed by Arlene Angel.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Oraliz Guzman, y soy madre de dos hijos que van a las escuelas públicas de Hartford. También soy miembro de Hartford Defense and Deportation y somos parte de la coalición de Conérico para todos. Mi hijo mayor tiene problemas de aprendizaje desde hace siete años. Su pediatra recomendó evaluaciones en la escuela. Por falta de recursos en la escuela, no se hicieron. Ahora él está en séptimo grado y sigue con los mismos problemas de aprendizaje. También tengo otro hijo que está en tercer grado. Tener a mis dos hijos en diferentes escuelas se me dificulta, especialmente en el invierno. Realmente me enfrento a tomar la decisión de cambiar a mis hijos de escuela, aunque ellos están acostumbrados a su escuela y sus compañeros. Me gustaría que mis dos hijos vayan a una escuela pública cerca de mi casa y de alto nivel educativo. Me pregunto y les pregunto a ustedes: ¿Cómo es posible que en la capital de Conérico, uno de los estados más ricos de Estados Unidos y en una escuela magnet, falten materiales básicos como papel, lápices, y hasta papel de toilet? Yo he hablado con los maestros, y muchas veces ellos tienen que comprar de su propio dinero dichos materiales. Las computadoras son insuficientes para todos los alumnos que tienen en las clases. En un país que apoya la tecnología y en tiempos que se usa la tecnología para todo, esto la verdad que es decepcionante. Necesitamos invertir en educación pública de calidad a nivel local en forma equitativa, donde cada estudiante tenga los recursos y apoyos que se necesitan. Pero con recortes a su presupuesto, eso se nos aleja más de la realidad y divide a nuestra comunidad en la búsqueda de mejores escuelas. ¿Por qué se nos obliga a buscar afuera de Hartford y fuera de las escuelas públicas de Hartford si vivimos aquí en Hartford y pagamos nuestros impuestos aquí en Hartford? Los recortes que se nos presentaron no son la solución. Es una contradicción pensar en recortar estos presupuestos en vez de invertir en las mejoras de nuestras escuelas públicas. Por todo esto, les pido que nos apoyen y no acepten recortes al presupuesto escolar. También les pedimos posponer el presupuesto de cada escuela hasta saber la decisión final del presupuesto que será asignado a las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Gracias por la oportunidad de testificar. Posen buenas tardes.
Good afternoon. My name is Oraliz Guzman, and I am the mother of two children who attend Hartford Public Schools, member of Hartford Deportation Defense, and we are part of the Connecticut 4-0 Coalition. My oldest son has learning problems since he was seven years old. His pediatrician recommended evaluations at school, but due to lack of resources at this school, they were not done. Now, he's in 7th grade and still has the same learning problems. I also have another son who is in 3rd grade, a bit bad children, Montessori. Having my two children in different schools makes it difficult for me, especially in the winter. I am really faced with making the decision to change my children's schools, even thought they are used to their schools and peers. I would like my two children to go to public schools close to my house and with high education level. I also wonder, and I ask you, how is it possible that in the capital of Connecticut, one of the richest states in the United States and in a magnet school, there is shortage of basic materials like papers, pencils, and even toilet paper? I have spoken with teachers, and they often have to buy supplies. There aren't enough computers for all the students in their class. In a country that embraces technology and is used to everything, this is very disappointing. We need to invest in quality public education at the local level in an equitable way where each student has the resources and support they need. But with cuts to their school budget, this is far from our reality. And as a result, our community is divided into the research for better schools. Why are we forced to look outside of Hartford and outside of Hartford Public Schools if we live in Hartford and pay our taxes in Hartford? The cuts presented to us are not the solution. It's contradiction to think about cutting budgets instead of investing in improving our public schools. For all these reasons, I ask you to support us and not accept cuts to the school budget that will be allocated to Hartford Public Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Oraliz Guzman.
I know I said Arlene Angel, but there is another person that requires interpretation. Alba, if you just want to sit there, I will call Maria Adela, since there's two folks that need interpretation. Maria Adela?
Buenas tardes. A nuestra junta de educación, nuestros administradores escolares, concejales de Hartford, nuestra comunidad. Mi nombre es Arlene Angel, y soy residente de Hartford hace 23 años, miembro de Make the Road Conérico y su comité de educación. Tengo dos hijas que asistieron en la escuela Belice antes de cambiarlas a las escuelas Crete. Estoy aquí porque todos los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas merecen la mejor educación en sus escuelas variadas. Entendemos que se necesita 30 millones de dólares para mantener el nivel de servicio que ahora tenemos en las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y la ciudad ha contribuido solamente con 3 millones. Estamos aquí para evitar cualquier recorte y encontrar maneras de engrosar o rendir presupuestos. Les invito a los miembros de la junta de educación, nuestros concejales, los administradores de las escuelas, y todos los maestros y personal en las escuelas a que se unan con nosotros en la lucha por los fondos estatales que necesitamos urgentes. No es justo que aceptemos estos recortes y que además tengamos que elegir cuáles de nuestros servicios virtuales salvar. No es justo, porque todos son claves para nuestro futuro, nuestros hijos. Como miembro del consejo de líderes de nuestra organización Make the Road Conérico, que cada año luchamos más y más por la educación estatal, por ejemplo, hace dos años pasamos la ley de derechos lingüísticos de estudiantes y familias multilingües. Este es otro ejemplo en el testimonio escrito que construimos al año pasado para apoyar la fórmula de fondos escolares HB 5212. Este año hay que grandar la oportunidad de lograr más fondos para la ley HB 1511 y sus propuestas de aumentar la forma de fondos para estudiantes multilingües de bajos ingresos y de educación especial. Si logramos esta ley, esta inyectará millones de dólares a las escuelas públicas de Hartford, el mínimo de fondos necesarios para mantener a nuestro sistema escolar. Hay que tomar acción. No es suficiente solamente mandar cartas a nuestros representantes. Tenemos que seguir levantando nuestras voces, demandando más fondos estatales, y hay que organizar juntos como ciudad y empujar a los legisladores de comité de educación y nuestros representantes y senadores de Hartford. Les invitamos a manifestar. Con nosotros, planear acciones públicas, por ejemplo, en otras ciudades como Chicago, hemos visto que las acciones latales como interrumpir las jornadas escolares para salir a las calles a marchar. Digo a ustedes, los miembros de la junta de educación, que no mangasten su energía en planificación pesipista de más recortes. Vimos el año pasado el daño que hizo cuando despidieron a muchos maestros por los recortes, y luego tuvieron que contratar los posiciones de nuevos cuando fondos estatales llegaron inmediatamente después de los recortes. Seguimos luchando para estos fondos estatales. Llamemos a nuestra junta de educación a luchar con nosotros si se puede. Gracias y que tengan buenas tardes.
All right. Good afternoon to our Board of Education, our school administrators, Hartford Council members, and our community. My name is Arlene Anchem, and I've been a Hartford resident for 23 years. I'm a member of Make the Road Connecticut and its education committee. I have two daughters who attended Belice School before transferring to Crete Schools. I'm here because all public school students deserve the best education in their neighborhood schools. We understand that 30 million is needed to maintain the current level of services in HPS, yet the city has only contributed 3 million. We are here to prevent any cuts and find ways to increase the budget. I invite the members of the Board of Ed, our council members, school administrators, and all teachers and school staff to join with us in the fight for the state funding we need. It is unfair that we are expected to accept these cuts and on top of that be forced to choose which vital services to save because they are all essential to our future. As a member of the Leadership Council of Make the Road, we fight harder every year for state education funding. Two years ago, we passed the Language Rights Act for multilingual students and families, and last year, we prepared written testimony in support of HB 5212, which funded the school funding formulas. This year, there's a major opportunity to secure more funding through House Bill 1511, which proposes increasing the funding formula for multilingual students, low-income students, and creating one for special ed. If we pass this law, it will inject millions of dollars into Hartford Public Schools, the minimum we need to sustain our school system. We must take action. Sending letters to our representatives is not enough. We must continue raising our voices and demanding more state funding. We need to organize as a city and push legislators on the education committee along with our Hartford reps and senators. We invite you, the Board of Ed, to protest with us and plan public actions. For example, in other cities like Chicago, we've seen the actions such as school walkouts and marches have been effective. To the members of the Board of Education, please don't waste your energy on pessimistic planning for more cuts. We saw the harm caused last year when cuts were made and teachers were laid off, but then those positions were rehired when the state funding arrived after those layoffs. We will keep fighting for school funding, and we call on you, our Board of Education, to fight with us. Si se puede. Yes, we can.
Si se puede.
Si se puede.
Se puede.
Pepe Cruz. Y siguiendo a Pepe Rosmali Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Manrique. Buenas tardes a la junta de educación y nuestra comunidad. Me presento. Entre ustedes soy padre de un estudiante del segundo grado de la escuela MD Fox. Queremos prestar nuestro sentir y hacer un llamado a la acción para garantizar que nuestros niños reciban la educación de calidad que merecen. La educación es la base del futuro de nuestra sociedad. No podemos permitir que los recortes en presupuestarios afecten el desarrollo y bienestar de nuestros hijos. Es fundamental. Se destinan los recursos necesarios para mantener y mejorar la infraestructura educativa. En la escuela de mi hijo hemos visto con preocupación la falta de maestros, sustitutos como ejemplo. Cuando la maestra de mi hijo tiene que ausentarse por razones médicas, ya que ella sufre de una enfermedad crónica, nuestros niños se quedan sin guía académica. Bajo el cuidado de un auxiliar que le muestra películas y se le hace juegos todo el día porque no están entrenadas como maestros. Esto genera una pérdida de tiempo valioso para el aprendizaje, lo cual tiene un gran impacto negativo en su formación académica de nuestros hijos. No entendemos por qué MD Fox no tiene los fondos para contratar una maestra sustituta para trabajo con la maestra principal y asegure que haya clases de calidad cuando un maestro tiene que faltar por razones de salud. Una escuela debe tener los fondos y el personal para garantizar educación continuada de la calidad para sus estudiantes. Como padres, nos preocupamos por el presupuesto de nuestras escuelas. Por esta razón, mi esposa Shayla dio el testimonio para la fórmula de fondos escolares HB 1511, y estamos haciendo todo lo que está en nuestras manos para mejorar esta situación. Y por lo tanto, queremos que ustedes, miembros de la junta de educación, se unan a nuestra lucha y no acepten los recortes, distritales, y luchen por los recursos estatales que pueden salvar a nuestras escuelas.
Good afternoon to the Board of Education and our community. This is Pepe Manrique Cruz. I stand before you as a parent of a 2nd grade student at MD Fox School. We want to express our concerns and issue a call to action to ensure that our children receive the quality education they deserve. Education is the foundation of our society's future, and we cannot allow budget cuts to negatively impact our children's development and well-being. It is crucial that the necessary resources are allocated to maintain and improve our schools. At my child's school, we have been deeply concerned about the lack of substitute teachers. For example, when my child's teacher has to be absent for medical reasons, since she suffers from a chronic illness, our children are left without academic guidance. Instead, they're placed under the supervision of an aide who is not trained as a teacher and spends the entire day showing movies and playing games with them. This results in a significant loss of valuable learning time, which has a major impact on our children's academic development. We don't understand why MD Fox doesn't have the necessary funds to hire a permanent substitute teacher to work with the main teacher and ensure that quality instruction continues when that teacher must be absent for health reasons. A school should have the funding and staffing required to guarantee uninterrupted, high-quality education for its students. As parents, we are deeply concerned about the school budget. That is why my wife Shayla testified in support of the school funding formula increases in House Bill 1511, and we're doing everything in our power to push to improve this situation. Therefore, we call on you, members of the Board of Education, to join our fight. Do not accept district budget cuts and instead fight for the state resources that can save our schools. Thank you.
Rosmali Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes a los miembros de la junta escolar, administradores escolares, miembros del consejo y comunidad. Mi nombre es Rosmali Rodriguez, y soy madre de un estudiante de kinder en Bachelor de Montessori. Soy miembro de Make the Road y comité de educación Madres Guerreras. Llevamos muchos años enfocándonos en la justicia lingüística. En el 2022, nuestro grupo realizó una campaña aquí en Hartford llamada "No más barreras: acceso a la educación". Ahora, tuvimos muchas reuniones con los administradores de las escuelas públicas en Hartford, y nos prometieron interpretación calificada en reuniones escolares importantes. Sin embargo, seguimos sin ver estos servicios. Por ejemplo, quiero compartir mi experiencia en la noche de regreso a clases de este año escolar a Bachelor. Esa es una de las reuniones más importantes del año, ¿verdad? Es el momento en que nos reunimos como comunidad para conocernos y establecer nuestras metas para el año escolar. Pero a pesar de que la noche de regreso a clases estaba llena de padres que hablan español, no hubo interpretación ni materiales en español. Lo mismo ocurrió cuando enviaron el invitación para unirse al consejo de gobierno escolar. Solo enviaron en inglés por correo electrónico. Me preocupan los recortes de presupuestos que se mencionaron en la presentación porque temo en alguno de estos recortes de personal podrán en mayor riesgo los servicios de interpretación y traducción en cada escuela. En las estrategias de mitigación presupuestos, se dice que se reducirá el presupuesto para el personal categorizado como no certificado, tales como los proveedores de servicios familiares y comunitarios. En un sistema escolar ideal, cada escuela debería estar agregando personal que brinde apoyo comunitario como acceso al idioma en lugar de recortar el personal que trabaja en las familias. El sistema escolar tiene que invertir en nosotros, los padres, si quieren que luchemos a su lado. Porque en este momento está claro que si no estamos todos involucrados y luchando por nuestras escuelas, seguiremos perdiendo más y más cada año. Vimos en las presentaciones del presupuesto que la administración de HPS está pidiendo a las familias que envíen cartas a los funcionarios electos. Nosotras ya tomamos acciones en la legislatura. Yo hice testimonio en persona en apoyo de HB 1511 hace dos semanas. Nos alegra que el liderazgo escolar esté haciendo más esfuerzos de llamados a la acción. Queremos responder a estos llamados, pero para poder hacerlo, queremos que ustedes se aseguren que cada escuela nos incluye activamente en sus procesos, lo cual debe empezar con una buena comunicación multilingüe con nosotros, padres y madres y estudiantes. Hacemos un llamado a nuestra junta de educación para que financie el personal escolar que garantice que se respeten los derechos lingüísticos tanto de los estudiantes como de los padres para que podamos luchar juntos, unidos por nuestras escuelas públicas. Y hacemos un llamado a nuestra junta escolar para que garantice que los consejos de gobierno escolar SGC sean operativos y accesibles porque no podemos lograr nada sin una participación realmente democrática en nuestras escuelas. Gracias por la oportunidad de participar.
Good afternoon to our school board members, school administrators, city council members, and our community. My name is Rosmali Rodriguez, and I'm the mother of a kindergartner at Bachelor de Montessori School. I'm a member of Make the Road, the Madres Guerreras Education Committee, and we have been focusing on language justice for many years. In 2022, our group had a campaign here in Hartford called "No more barriers: education access now." We had many meetings with the administrators of Hartford Public Schools, and they promised qualified interpretation at important school meetings, but we're still not seeing these services. For example, last year at Back to School Night at Bachelor, that's one of the most important meetings of the year, right? But when we come together as a community to meet each other and set our goals for the school year, but even though the Back to School Night was full of Spanish-speaking parents, there was no interpretation or any materials in Spanish. The same thing happened when they sent out the invite to join the School Governance Council.
It was only sent out in English and only over email. I'm concerned about the proposed cuts discussed in the presentation because I'm worried that some of these personnel cuts will further jeopardize interpretation and translation services at each school. The proposed mitigation say they will cut the budget for non-certified staff at each school like the family and community service provider. In our ideal school system, each school would be adding personnel who can provide community support like language access instead of cutting the personnel that work with families. The school system has to invest in us parents if you want us to fight with you because right now it's clear that if we don't have all of us involved in fighting for our schools, we'll just keep losing more and more every year. We saw in the budget presentations that the HPS administration is asking families to send letters to elected officials. We are already lobbying. I testified in person in support of House Bill 1511 at the state legislature two years ago, two weeks ago, sorry. We are happy that our school leadership is doing more lobbying and putting out calls to action. We want to answer these calls and work together, but in order to do that, we need you to include us here in the school district and in every school. We're calling on our Board of Education to fund school staff who ensure that both students and parents' language rights are met so that we can fight together, united for our public schools. And we're calling on our school board to ensure that the school governance councils are operational and accessible in language also because we can't win anything together without democratic participation in our schools. Thank you for listening.
María Adela.
Buenas tardes, estimados miembros de la Junta de Educación, señores del Power Education, concecales y padres todos presentes.
Good evening, dear Board of Education members, superintendent, Board of Education officers, councils and parents.
Mi nombre es María Adela y soy madre, miembro del colectivo de defensa y somos parte de la coalición Deconéricos para Todos. Estoy aquí para testificar ante ustedes.
My name is María Adela Pineda and I am a Hartford Public School parent, a member of the advocacy collective and we are part of the Connecticut for All Coalition. I am here to testify before you.
Quisiera empezar realizando una pregunta a las personas presentes. ¿Qué esperamos ustedes o qué esperan ustedes del sistema de educación especial? Teniendo un hijo con necesidades especiales, el cual necesita un equipo de profesionales que estén presentes en persona con ellos en la escuela y no por Zoom.
I would like to start by asking a question. What do you expect from the special education system? Having a child with special needs who needs a team of professionals who work with her or him in person, not on Zoom.
¿Qué harían ustedes ante tal situación? ¿Alzarían igual su voz por su hijo? ¿Defenderían sus derechos al igual como nosotros, los padres que nos presentamos en este lugar?
What will you do in this situation? Will you raise your voice for your child to defend his or her rights just like us parents that come here to speak in front of you?
Yo estoy aquí para levantar la voz por mi hija. Soy madre de unas gemelas, una de ellas tiene una condición síndrome Down. Actualmente tiene 12 años y cursa el séptimo grado de la escuela Clásico Magnette de la ciudad de Hartford.
I am here to speak up for my daughter. I am the mother of twin girls, one of whom has Down syndrome and currently 12 years old and is in the seventh grade of Clásico Magnette School in Hartford.
En el año 2023 apliqué en el sistema de lotería de las escuelas buscando una mejora para mi niña. Actualmente mi hija recibe los servicios a los cuales califica según su evaluación. Pero una vez más estoy convencida que hay fallas, que hay vacíos que podríamos mejorar en nuestras escuelas.
In 2023, I applied to the school lottery system seeking an improvement for my child. Currently, my daughter is receiving the services she qualifies based on her assessments. But once again, I am convinced that there are flaws, that there are gaps, that we can improve in our schools.
La terapeuta del lenguaje no está presente, no está en persona. Ella recibe su servicio a través de la plataforma Zoom. Claro está que su avance no será jamás el 100% de las metas que se esperan a su tiempo.
The speech therapist is not present, not in person. She receives her services through the Zoom platform, of course. Her progress will never be 100% of what is expected according to the timelines and the goals.
Si a un maestro le cuesta mantener a los niños sentados en un salón de clase, que prestaran, que presten atención, que hagan sus actividades y que realicen todo lo que el profesor o la maestra les indica, cuánto más a un niño con una condición trabajando en una plataforma Zoom donde hay barreras que aumentan aún más su enseñanza, conexión, falta de motivación por el niño o por el maestro que no está presente.
If a teacher has a hard time seeking children and making sure that they are sitting in their classroom to pay attention and that they're active face-to-face, how much harder it is to do this online on a platform like Zoom? And with a child with a condition, the barrier increases even more such as poor connection on the computer, not wanting to be in front of the screen or lack of interest and motivation.
Otra de sus profesionales, la terapeuta ocupacional. En nuestra última reunión del PPT el año pasado, me enteré que tampoco estaba físicamente en la escuela y que también guía las terapias de la niña a través del Zoom.
One of the other professionals involved in her plan is an occupational therapist. At our school last PPT meeting, I learned that also the physical and the occupational therapy at the school is not in person and that she is guiding my daughter in doing therapy through Zoom.
Otra situación muy incómoda que me tocó vivir con mi niña fue el verano pasado. Ella tenía que estar, acceder a sus clases según el programa de año extendido y pensé que sería todos los días como todos los niños cuando van a escuela de verano y no fue así.
Another very uncomfortable situation I had with my child was last summer. She had to access her classroom according to the expected year schedule and I thought it would be like every other day, like other children getting into their classroom, like any Monday, but it wasn't like that.
Solo recibía dos días a la semana cuando, cuando pedía explicación o respuestas por esta situación, solo me ofrecieron este programa. Me decían que era lo único que tenían para ofrecerme a mi niña, así que tuve que aceptarlo.
So I was only able to receive the aftercare or extracurricular activities for my daughter twice a week. When I asked for an explanation, the answer was that there was no other program where I could be, where she can be included. So I had to accept the services that way.
Como padres deseamos que nuestros hijos tengan una buena educación, que gocen de escuelas seguras, con profesionales y servicios adecuados y necesarios según las necesidades de cada niño. Deseamos ver a nuestros niños con necesidades especiales involucrados en actividades recreativas y deportivas dentro de nuestras escuelas. Deseamos que todos nuestros niños asistan a cualquier escuela en nuestro propio distrito sin importar el diagnóstico, que no haga falta buscar escuela fuera de nuestro entorno para recibir una educación que queramos.
As parents, we want our children to have a good education, to enjoy safe schools with professionals and services appropriate and necessary for each child's need. We want to see our children with special needs involve in recreational and sports activity within our schools. We want all children to attend any school in our districts, regardless of diagnosis, that there is no need to seek our school's outplacement and for our children to attend and have services in our school district.
Por todo esto le pedimos que no acepten recortes al presupuesto escolar. Toda condición en nuestros hijos es importante. Todo lo que ellos necesitan o todo lo que exige en las escuelas es importante para ellos. Que todas las necesidades sean atendidas a tiempo para el futuro de nuestros hijos y para la sociedad. También les pedimos proponer, posponer el presupuesto de cada escuela hasta saber la decisión final del presupuesto asignado a las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Therefore, please do not accept cuts in the school's budget. Every condition in our children's life is important to be addressed in a timely manner for the future of our children and society. We also ask you to postpone the budget for each school until, until we know the final decision on the budget allocated to the Hartford Public Schools.
Gracias por la oportunidad de testificar y de escuchar.
Thank you so much for the opportunity of testifying and listening to us.
Our next speaker is Nick Lebron.
How much time do I have? Good evening, honorable members of the Board of Education. My name is Nick Lebron and I am director of Community Schools for Catholic Charities. The community school programs helps families through wraparound services that focus on case management, care coordination, child development, enrichment activities, clinical services, after-school programming that guide and promote overall well-being to the scholars and families we serve. The budget the Board faces during these challenging times are real. However, the daily trials and tribulations the scholars and families face can be overwhelming and traumatic. There are thousands of scholars and families we serve annually who benefit from our programming. Just to give you some small amount of data, we serve close to 1,000 scholars this past year with close to 2,000 families in the school system. Just a little indication of the dosage, we offer academic support, school day interventions, social, emotional and wellness, substance abuse and violence prevention, juvenile justice prevention, life skills and recreational activities. We provide before-school care, after-school care, self-esteem, develop healthy behaviors, field trips. Oftentimes, these kids don't travel outside of our borders and we provide them with field trips, extended-day programming, workforce readiness. And so that's just a few, including parental and family engagement, support for PTOs and the SGCs. The success stories range on a case-by-case basis. One scholar's success may be finding coping mechanisms, while connections to housing for parents could be vital. We all know the amount of diminished risk factors we provide through after-school programming. The more resiliencies we build in our children, the better the outcomes for the families, community and the state. The community schools is a good investment for the Board as it is effective, individualized, and breaks the cycle of aggregated risk factors our children have increasingly faced. I'm asking you that you please adequately fund the community school program as it is of extreme importance to our community. And with the 27 seconds that I have left, you know, we have a huge amount of risk factors for our scholars and families and our scholars in particular. Without after-school programming, where will they go? Who will support them? Last, in the recent years, we've had suicide, we've had shootings, we have scholars being shot, and recently a homicide. The other thing is that the district is asking us to support summer school as well as next year, an extended date that adds an extra half an hour. But yet we're not on the budget. And so the question I ask all of you is how are we expected to do this? And where will these scholars go? Thank you.
Michael Downs. And Michael Downs will be followed by John Walton.
Evening, Board members. Tonight, I, I see that there's a lot of needs and a lot of cuts. I've been involved with the city of Hartford for 50 years and I've watched the budget process, the Board of Education, for that time. I've seen superintendents come and superintendents go. I've, but the thing that remains the same is the budget seems to increase every year and the cuts increase every year. And the amount of services for our students decrease every year and needs of our students increase every year. Now, the data indicates that the city of Hartford, on one end, is one of the richest cities in the country. And it also indicates on the other end that it's one of the poorest cities in the country. And in various magazines and newspapers, I've read both sets of data. And we have in the city over a trillion dollars worth of corporations. And we can't balance our budget and give adequate services to our students. So the thing is that they have to contribute much more. And the mayor and the city council have got to get together and the Board has got to also be involved in urging this to get their attention. The best way to get their intention, attention is to significantly increase their taxes. I mean, really increase them. And because that's where the money will come. We give all kinds of waivers and breaks for corporations to stay in our city. Yet, there's not enough money coming in. Far as I'm concerned, if they, if they don't like it here, they can leave. Pay your fair share of the tax. And so this is another thing that we need to do is to just tell the state, and the state of Connecticut has to understand that the transportation costs that we incur for desegregation, inclusion, are a state problem. Education is a state Education is a state issue. Therefore, transportation should be a state cost, not a city cost. So we shouldn't have to consider that in our budget. And in prior times, we had what they call the bishops because all of the CEOs of the corporations lived in the city. So they cared about what went on in the city and how much, and the type of education that the students received. Now, they don't live in the city and they don't care. And all they want to do is use the city. So I think that we, that's where our effort has to go, is in those areas. Thank you.
Our last speaker of the night is John Walton.
Good evening, distinguished Board members. And good evening to the absence of our superintendent. So we're back at this table again. And most of us knew we would be here, especially the Board members who served on the last Board who are here still. So let's start with the fixes, right? Because we all know the problem and one of the reoccurring echoing, reoccurrences from this audience and from our city residents is that we need to be more involved. So engagement at the school level, because we're going to need your help. And to this Board, I thank you. The job that you do is almost an impossible job. It's a thankless job. And you have to help us figure out the mess that's been created through a system that was formed. And I want to begin and have you think of uncuffing yourselves from the system as it was. Let's do something new. To your point, Board Member Brody, that community engagement staff member is a must because the only way we're going to get ourselves out of this problem long-term and is to start short-term is to be able to engage and educate our community. I watched the workshop meeting and I felt the passion of Board Member Fortune really explaining where we are right now and how everyone is not, does not understand the process in which we are in. So how do we get there, Member Fortune? We get there by starting at the school level, engaging at the SGC level, opening our doors back open to these parents, bring them into our schools. When we bring them into our schools, we will be able to identify the parents who are ready to serve on the SGCs. And once they're ready to serve on the SGCs, I tasked this Board to train those parents to then identify the schools who have functioning, good SGCs, create the standard, and model that standard to all of the schools who need help in formulating their SGCs. Because once we engage our parents to the point that we educate them and show them the process, they will begin to be a partner to the administration of that school to know what that budget is doing. Because a lot of times, and for the good principals and good administrators that are in their school, this doesn't affect you. They will be teammates in determining what cuts need to be made, if any, and where we should actually prioritize our spending because we have a spending problem in Hartford, in Hartford Public Schools. And when you have the parents involved from the beginning, to your point, Board Member Fortune, they won't be such a surprise when we have to make real-life decisions because our parents will be educated to what we need, what we should be prioritizing, and maybe that, that workshop or that's in Vegas doesn't need to be attended or that trip in China doesn't need to be attended because we have to prioritize keeping staff members in our school so that we can be able to help and support our students. I thank you for sharing, Board Member Perez, your experience as being a Hartford resident and then a Hartford student and now you're giving back to that, you as well, Board Member Fortune. And to your point, Board Member Ledger, we need those supports for our students. That money should be following. Now, our legislative task force will help us and we're all on board with advocating for more funding from the state. And that's the vehicle that we can use. I submitted to you documentation. I didn't put my name on it because I want you to pay attention to the point, not who wrote it. But I think that answers some of the questions, short-term and long-term. Board Member Tatum, you were right. This budget that we are getting, this preliminary budget that we are getting, shows us real-life cuts and we really get to feel what it looks like. And to your point, Board Member Mills, you want direct answers. So how do you get direct answers? Then you stop just listening to what administration is telling you. Have a select committee of SGC presidents who are educated and informed on how this works and be able to ask them the questions because they are at the ground level seeing what's actually going on in their schools. Now you have a diverse, different opinion versus the information that you just received from the people who have managed us this entire time. Now, what we do know is that we've been managed to get to this direction. I think it's time for this Board to really explore that we should come out of just allowing management to give you the information and manage us through this. They need help. It's obvious. They need the help. And Board Member Walker, you went through that list at the workshop and you really prioritized what you thought was something that we could stand as a city. And I agree with you in that list. And I also agree with Chairwoman Huckenholt, who said, "We have a lot of amazing things that are happening in Hartford, but we can be amazing together." We need to reform our educational model to include the industrial trades, to engage those students who are not coming to school and also engage students from other districts who don't go to school as well to say, "We have a real opportunity for you to come here and learn something that is not just in their regular educational model. You have the ability to learn something new. We attract more students, we increase our enrollment, then we can get more funding." That makes sense. And we don't need to be, one of the tasks that this Board gave the superintendent, and I hope it gives the new superintendent, is the goal of community engagement. Well, let's start at the school levels. Make sure those SGCs are functioning, make sure those SGCs are educated, make sure those SGCs are partnering with the schools, make sure they know what the budgets are doing. And then you create, to be clear from my last statement, you create a select committee of SGC presidents who oversee what happens at central office so that you can ask the direct questions and get the direct answers and it doesn't just come from one side. This is the beginning of a start that I think we can uncuff ourselves from the old rules, begin to show the city and the rest of the country what it is to be an urban school district who gets it right. We saw that the mayor included $3 million. So Mayor Ruinen is listening, like I thought he would be. But we need more. Governor Lamont, and for your corporate investment that happens in the capital city, you need to have a thriving Hartford Public School system in order to attract more corporate dollars. How do you do that? Well, then we need for you to step up and give more because Hartford requires more. And in the meantime, we will become accountable for what you do give us and manage it properly. But the managing of what we have in our resources has to start from the ground. It cannot just come from one side. And we need to focus on this, extremely important for us to focus in it. Open our doors, bring our parents in. Let's educate our parents while we educate our children. And in the meantime, while we build this capacity and improve, we will have the supports we need in order to be a thriving Hartford Public School system. I thank you again for the time and I thank you again for the opportunity.
And that concludes public comments.
Thank you so much and thank you to everyone who came out tonight to share your commentary, your testimony. I know it's not easy to get up here and speak to us, so truly grateful for you taking the time to share this information. If you have additional feedback for us, please do send it to Ms. Santiago. Our email is csantiago@hartfordschools.org. I say it every, all right, I got the thumbs up, I got it right. I appreciate everyone here. Thank you again. Thank you to my Board members for, for sitting here and listening as well. And I know we've all taken a lot of notes. Thank you to the public and thank you to the administration for presenting tonight. Take care, everyone, and have a great night.